Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 16th, 2020. Will everyone please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Um, I have a, an appointment of new Board of Education trustee. So I'd like to officially introduce and welcome Sergey Koifman. And Sergey, we are going to go ahead and have you read your oath of office as a newly appointed um, education trustee, but first can I get a motion to approve Sergey Koifman to the Board of Education position for still in the seat for Kristi Lorenzo?
Motion, Donna.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay Sergey, you are official now, so welcome and um, I'm gonna have you take your oath of office.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board Trustee of the Monroe Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Okay wonderful, thank you. We're sorry that this couldn't have been um, in a public session, it seems very disconnected to do this in a virtual setting, but um, I'd just like to say welcome to you. I will publicly state that we have the vacancy for Mr. Di Lorenzo since um, he had to resign his position back in September. And we were fortunate to have um, several people uh, reach out that we were able to meet with them and the board officially uh, was able to have conversations and we're happy to welcome uh, Dr. Koifman to the, to the uh, Board of Education. We think he'll be a great asset, so we, we welcome you. I don't know if anybody else wants to give a well wish before I move on, but.
Welcome, you're joining a great team, Dr. Koifman. Thank you for your service.
Welcome, Board.
Welcome.
Great to have you here.
Welcome aboard.
And Sergey, is there anything that you'd like to share at this point? I mean, at the end of the meeting, we kind of do a little round robin around the table where you can kind of, you know, give your two cents, but I don't know if there's anything that you'd like the public to know about yourself or anything that you'd like to share?
Um, I'd like to thank uh, the Board uh, for uh, accepting my nomination and um, it is a great honor uh, to be uh, part of this Board of Education. And I'm looking forward to uh, working with this wonderful group of uh, people uh, to help um, our school district uh, be the best it can be. Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Great, thank you so much, Sergey. Okay, so moving along with our agenda, we are going to, actually prior to me moving on to um, questions and comments, I'd like to go ahead and just uh, address a few things that have come to the Board's attention and over the recent weeks and, and as recent as yesterday. Um, the first is in regards to feedback that we received from our last Board of Ed meeting, which was on November 24. Um, we just, we want to, we got a lot of emails and feedback and conversations that were had. And we want to just, you know, put it out there that the intent of the Board of Ed is to always be respectful to each other, the cabinet, the staff, the faculty, and most importantly, our students. I know that as we sit here this evening and speak, um, there are several students that are probably logged into this meeting, not only for school purposes, but we're actually honoring some of them tonight. So I think it needs to be important that our message is always clear that emotions and stress have been very high during this pandemic amongst everyone, including adults. Um, but I think it's important that, you know, even though there may continue to be times that we disagree with each other, that we disagree with decisions that are made, that we're always respectful of, of each other and the message that we're putting out there. Um, so I think that, that's the first thing that I definitely wanted to discuss. Um, the second issue that I'd like to address is in regards to a recent post that was made on social media regarding the cabinets and their salaries. I'd like to first clarify some of the information that was posted. It is very important from this Board of Education that the public is made aware that every single thing that we do is posted, which means that we post our meetings, we post our agendas, we post our minutes, and then we then post the videos to everything that we do. There are not secret meetings that are held, there are not decisions made behind closed doors that we do not share with the general public. The information that people are referring to was a decision that happened at a public board meeting back on September 23rd. All of that information can be found on our district webpage on Board Docs. And that is where we encourage the public to read and research all information because that's where it is always located. Um, with that said, I will go ahead and read an official statement that we have released because we were contacted by Blaze Gomez of News 12. So I will address that the Monroe Woodbury Central School District's legal counsel conducts a detailed review of cabinet level, superintendent and assistant superintendents contractual agreements on an annual basis. This review includes a detailed salary comparison analysis, which takes into account cost per student and percentage of budget compared to similar districts within a target market. Results of the analysis showed that the salaries of Monroe Woodbury's assistant superintendents ranked below the 50th percentile when compared to their peers. The superintendent ranked below the 20th percentile when compared to her peers. As a result, legal counsel recommended salary adjustments that would move the salary range of these positions into the 50th percentile or the average range. The Monroe Woodbury Board of Education studied the findings, considered the recommendation of legal counsel, and approved these salary adjustments for the cabinet members as of September of 2020. The superintendent of schools received an increase of $21,000 and the assistant superintendents each received an increase of $14,000. So that is a statement that we put out publicly to um, Blaze Gomez of News 12. So um, I mean, there's, there aren't necessarily any questions or anything that we can discuss in regards to that. But if anybody should have any further questions, as I've stated several times publicly, privately to personal friends, our email addresses are posted on our public district webpage under Board Docs as well, so that can be found online. Um, I'll move on to this evening's questions and comments from interested citizens, which I believe Ms. Batucci, our district clerk, we have a few, obviously tonight, everything is virtual. Um, we have no, no public people that will be speaking, so Ms. Batucci will read those on behalf of the individuals that had previously submitted their questions.
Thank you. Um, the first comment we have is from Arena Sisinovich. My two children attend Monroe Woodbury schools. My son is in middle school and my daughter is a junior in the high school. I would like to share my deep disappointment with the quality and quantity of instruction my children have been receiving under the fully remote model in place since Thanksgiving. With half days, my daughter often has two classes plus a study hall period and/or lunch, and that is it for the day. Instead of five hours of math per week, she gets two and, 2.5. So, same with English and science. This is not compensated by additional independent work. Whenever a teacher is out, there is no substitute and the lesson just doesn't take place. I spoke to parents in other Orange County school districts and this appears to be a situation that is unique to Monroe Woodbury. Parents in Newburgh, Middletown, and Valley Central and other districts report that their children have a full bell schedule during remote instruction, whether temporary or permanent. I hope that the Board is equally concerned and will take immediate action to restore the full schedule during fully remote period. Respectfully, Arena Sisinovich. The next comment is from Liz Walsh. I think you guys are doing a great job. I do wish that things were just consistent. My biggest priority is the least amount of people get sick. Of course, I want my son to have the most ideal education, but I think he will catch up when things become normal again. The health and well-being of the teachers are the most important thing for us in our home. Four to five teachers died this week. I am a nurse in a hospital and believe teachers are at higher risk than me because kids are asymptomatic. Thanks, be safe. The next comment is from Rayanne Mack. I am a parent of two elementary school aged children in the district. As a parent of younger children, I feel that the board meetings are mainly focused on the needs of the middle school and high school aged children. It is clear that most of the board have older children. As a parent of younger children, I feel their needs are not being taken into account. Mrs. Rodriguez needs to realize that not every decision needs to be a district-wide decision. The needs of a five-year-old in school are much different than those of a 16-year-old. The cases are much lower in the elementary schools and the younger children are much more isolated as they don't work, don't drive, et cetera. I have written several emails to Mrs. Rodriguez regarding this issue and she has not responded to one, single one. Something more needs to be done to get the K-5 students back into the classroom. Other districts in the area have realized this and are making it work. Stop using the excuse of the size of the district and the, this district-wide nonsense and show that you have what is best for our children as your number one priority and fix this. Thank you. The next comment is from Tracy Wagner. When will our middle school and high school students have full-time remote instruction? And why have they only had part-time remote instruction? It has been frustrating having our children go to school part-time. And the final comment is from Christina Farrell. I think the teachers and students are doing an incredible job of adjusting to this ever-changing schedule. I do not feel that reducing classes to two and a half times per week at the middle school and high school is giving students and teachers enough time for adequate instruction. Please consider changing the current schedule to one that more closely resembles the most recent model when students met with their teachers for class four times per week. Thank you and stay safe. That's it.
Can I, can I just respond to, um, I think we're gonna talk about the schedule, so I'd rather leave that for when we do our presentation. But I do want to speak to the parent who talked about her elementary children. Um, so Donna, when you get a chance, please send me that email because I pretty much respond to every email. I, that one I don't recall. But I do want to say something about our decision-making. When we reopened school, one of the things that we said was that we were gonna work in collaboration with various states, various people. One of them being Dr. Gelman. So we take a lot of our guidance from Dr. Gelman, who's the Orange County Commissioner of Health. And so when she talked about us going on this holiday pause, we met with her and we specifically said, so, you know, should we uh, you know, keep our elementary students in school? When I say should we, I'm talking about all the superintendents because we met with her together. And her response was that um, this disease doesn't, you know, doesn't um, choose younger and smaller and, younger and older children. And that many of our families are families of multiple children, so you may have a small child with an older child and you may have asymptomatic children. So when she asked us, and I'm gonna rephrase that word because it was more like implored with us, she said, please make sure it's district-wide, K-12. You cannot separate the elementary children from the secondary children because the spread of COVID is throughout the district. And so I also want to point out to something else because before I made this decision to extend this, I took a look at our own data and our data was indicating in the last two weeks that this was district-wide. Students were getting COVID, not just at the high school, they were getting the COVID at the middle school and they were testing positive at the elementary school. So that is um, that is not a true statement. We, we are dealing with a pandemic that is affecting young, you know, middle school student, high school students, you know, middle-aged people, older people. It is, it is not discriminating against a specific age, it is throughout the entire age, for all the ages that we have. So I, I just want to make a point to that. Um, when people ask me, why are you doing things district-wide? A lot of our decisions again are based in collaboration with the Orange County Health Commissioner, who I have to look for because she is the person who, who um, can give us the best guidance as far as making good health decisions. And of course, the governor who um, gives us our guidance and then the state education department. I also want to bring up one more thing, um, and I, and I mentioned it in an email, but I think it's worth reiterating it. One of the things that I've been hearing is that the CDC has said they shortened the number of days for quarantine. That is not still for the state of New York. New York State still has the 14-day quarantine. And what I want people to, to understand, it's not necessarily the spread of COVID in school, it is the number of people that we have to quarantine. We've quarantined over 700 children since the start of school and over 200 staff members. And for us, not having teachers in the classroom make it very difficult to teach. So I, I think it's really important for people to understand that even though the CDC makes a recommendation, it, it is not law until the state of, in which you're living in, and for us, it's New York State, they still say that we have to have a 14-day quarantine. And that becomes very difficult. For example, if we have a student who tests positive and that student has been in the cafeteria and I've had maybe, I'm gonna, maybe 200 students who were eating lunch because they take off their mask. Many times, the county um, requests that I quarantine as many children, that I have to quarantine a large number of students. I'll give you an example, when um, we had a, someone test positive at one of our elementary schools, our K-1 building, every student who had gone to lunch um, on two days, two consecutive days, all of those students had to be quarantined. So those are the things that I look at before I make decision and I, and I say that we make decisions in collaboration with others, other people who can give us the proper guidance because we're not doctors. So again, I, I just wanted to reiterate that to this parent who was concerned that we don't, we don't speak about the elementary children. Um, that we do and we take all of those things into account before we make a recommendation or a decision.
Thank you. I know that you guys have a presentation coming up in regards to some of the updates with um, exactly the, the stuff going on with COVID and also with the scheduling, so I know we'll get to that in a few minutes in the agenda. Um, do we have any follow-up, um, Elsie, in regards to uh, questions or comments from the previous meeting that we had back and I think it was November 18th?
Right, no, we, we, I don't have any because it was a, that was an opportunity for people to get up and, and speak about their concerns that they had. But I did want to just follow up with um, a comment that, or a statement that, that Emily, who is our student representative, she talked a little bit about certain things such as strip searches and the code of conduct. And I did have a follow-up meeting with um, Emily. And I do have a follow-up meeting with our attorneys because I want to get clarification about strip searching in our code of conduct. Let me, let me clarify something, we do not do strip searches. However, there may be some legal requirements for us to have that in our code of conduct in case there isn't, there is a time when we believe a student or someone else has something on them that a search would be required. So I'm, I'm actually reaching, I reached out to, to Emily Lucas, our attorney, to get more guidance on that because I think then that becomes work for our policy committee, right? Because everything is based on policy.
Okay, very good. And I think Emily is on here this evening too, so I'm sure she'll give us an update a little bit later also. Okay, great. Okay, so moving on in the agenda, we actually um, have been fortunate to have uh, we keep putting this off and unfortunately, we've decided even in this virtual world that we don't want to put off the recognition any longer. Um, we are hopeful that we may actually be able to have an in-person recognition, but we're going to go ahead with a virtual one this evening. We have a recognition of the 2020 Mid-Hudson School Study Council Awards of Excellence. And what happened was we end up being able to nominate individuals for this. So we're, we're so excited to be able to announce and I do believe that they're watching this evening. I do know that Ms. Batucci invited them tonight virtually, so hopefully they're out there watching. Um, Ms. Batucci is holding up the awards now. Um, and uh, so I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Mary Grace Booyah, a recipient of the award. And she is in excellence in support staff role that she has within Monroe Woodbury. She was nominated by Dr. Bargafayaz, by John Casti, and Kristen Randtare. So we'd like to congratulate you, Mary Grace, thank you. Um, the second recipient this evening is Mr. Christopher Di Lorenzo, who is a recipient of the award in excellence for school board service. And uh, Chris was nominated by myself, uh, Mrs. Rodriguez, and Lori Hock for the countless work that he did, um, hours and hours, not only within our policy committee. He was the chairperson for the policy committee while he was a board member, but also as part of the facilities um, committee, where he was instrumental in um, helping with the bonds for the new turf fields. And he, he still literally up until the day that he officially had to leave the board was walking the fields and, and making sure that, that Ms. Hock had information as to what still needed to take place. So congratulations to Chris. We uh, we definitely missed him and um, we hope to be able to recognize both of them officially in the springtime. And normally, the recognition is, is met with a dinner that they actually put on a very nice dinner that they're allowed to come with their families. But unfortunately, as with many things, um, we're unable to do that because of COVID. But we wanted to at least recognize them tonight, so congratulations. The second recognition that we have tonight is another one that we've put off for quite a while and it is very well-deserved. It is the recognition of the National Merit Scholarship and Advanced Placement Scholars. And that is in regards to um, several of our students. So I think I'm passing this off to Dr. Hassler?
No, that would be me.
Oh, to Mrs. Rodriguez.
So, so I want to say that, that um, we had received feedback about making sure that we acknowledge the academic success of our students. And so it is with great pride that I read um, some names to you regarding students that have really achieved some um, some great academic accomplishments. So let me begin by the uh, describing what the award is and then I will share the name or names. So the National Merit Scholarship semifinalist is a designated, is a designation for students who score the top 1%. And this is based on your PSAT scores. Students are invited to complete the National Merit Scholarship applicants, which includes writing an essay. And so again, these students rank their top 1%. And, and for Monroe Woodbury, we have Daniel Lu, so congratulations, Daniel. Um, the next designation is a National Merit Scholarship commended. These students represent uh, students who score between the top 3 to 4%. And we have three students. We have Jennifer Song, Jaden Talbert, and Brian Whitfield. So congratulations. And I, and I see that Mrs., Mrs. Batucci is showing the signs. The next award is the Advanced Placement Scholars with Distinction. This award is granted to students who receive an average of at least 3.5 on all AP exams that they take. And those students, and, and those names are uh, Daniel Lu, Jennifer Song, um, Jaden Talbert, and Brian Whitfield. So congratulations to them too. Our next is the Advanced Placement Scholars with Honors. These, these students are granted an award because they've received an average score of at least a 3.25 on all of the AP exams that they have taken. Joshua Kaplan, Connor Howell, Olivia McQuade, Carly Newman, Jason Pearson, Chloe Saldaha, Sean Scully, Jay Sethi, and Catherine Sinkowski. So congratulations to them as well. And then the last group is the Advanced Placement Award. This is an AP scholar student who receives an award from the College Board for outstanding performance on several AP exams. Matthew Buzetsky, Griffin Bosco, Anderson Cooper, John Dolan, Emily Ezrodi, Sarah Gonzalez, Nicholas Gutierrez, Kevin Wang, Megan Jessick, Emily Gibb, Ke, Sheenuk Ka, Jackie Crowleyk, Charles Lu, Ashley Megan, Sarah Mednick, Ariana Nobles, Miriam Oki, Eric Shippey, Madison Vasallo, and Emily Wang. A big congratulations to all these students on a tremendous academic achievement.
Congratulations, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of, of all the board members, but please feel free to chime in. Uh, we really do hope that we'll be able to acknowledge all of them in person in the spring. Um, we, like I said, this has been on the agenda for a few months and we kept postponing it. But you know, it was time for some good news and it was time to share some of these accomplishments that these students have had. And we thought no better time, even though it's virtually, but to be able to recognize them. So congratulations to all of those students. It's a lot of hard work and uh, you deserve the honor to be recognized. So congratulations. Uh, okay, moving on now, we have uh, the school board recognition. And that one is led by Dr. Hassler.
Oh, that's me now again.
Oh, it says Dr. Hassler here, I promise you.
So it starts with me and then it goes to, and then it goes to Dr. Hassler.
Okay.
Let me just begin by saying that uh, this was, we normally have this in November. And so uh, things have been um, somewhat hectic. And so we moved it, we moved it to uh, the month of December. But it is really an opportunity for myself, the cabinet, the teachers, the students, um, the administration to just take a moment to thank this board because there is so much time that you devote. Um, it is certainly, uh, this is not a salary position, so, so um, um, Mr. Koifman, if you thought you were going to get paid for this job, you're not. But please don't, there, there are other things that will, will bring you great happiness. Um, but in any case, it is, it is really uh, an opportunity for us to say thank you to the board because you do spend an awful lot of time and um, are very, very supportive and you devote countless hours to our students. So I always start with the reading of a proclamation. And it is from um, our governor, Andrew Cuomo, and it, and it goes this way. Whereas each school year Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas our state's public educations, education system is designated to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society and an ever-changing world. And whereas school boards are currently facing the unprecedented challenges of a pandemic, while working closely with educators to prepare our students to learn. And whereas members of the local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. Recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members. And whereas the members of the New York State local boards, school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas during the week of October 19th through the 23rd, and of course, we've moved that to December, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week. And it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of the local school board. Now therefore, and this is, I'm reading on behalf of the governor, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 19th uh, through the 23rd as School Board Recognition Week. So I thank the board and I know that before I turn it over to Dr. Hassler. So the, the cabinet always um, looks for a fitting gift to give the, to give our board members. And so I thought it was fitting in, in, in a, in a time where we're, we're thinking of others. And so the, the cabinet and I, and I'm gonna show you the picture, we purchased a guitar for a student in our district who had wished for a guitar. So I just want to show you the guitar that we purchased for him. And I want to read a quote because I think that one of the things that we do so well in this district is that we are well-rounded. So it's really important for us, for our students not to have a, just a strong academic foundation, but we believe strongly in athletics and music. And so the gift is really the gift that you continue to support our kids and, and, and be able to have, you know, such an array of opportunities for our children. But not only that, because Mr. Anderson has always wanted a mask, I have for every board member, you will have your own mask and it has MW Board. So you're gonna get that from us as well. And one of the things that I, see, I thought of you, Mr. Anderson. And then one of the other things that we have is this beautiful And then one of the other things that we have is this beautiful pad, because I think that that one of the things you all like, you're all going to have your own personalized pad. See how happy some people are getting? It's not like a big deal.
It's the little things that really get you.
So this is our pad, and it's the guitar. And I promise that I will get you all pictures of this young man who so much wanted a guitar as the only gift that he wanted. And I thought it would be so fitting for the Board of Education to give the gift of music to a child in our district who needed it. So with that, I turn it over. Thank you. Thank you. With that, now I turn it over to Dr. Hassler, so he could he could do the the rest of this presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. And lessons, right? I believe it's it's a guitar and some lessons that are also with that, so. So every year, in addition to the cabinet recognition, we'll be hearing from the PTA shortly. Each of our buildings also takes takes a moment away from their 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 day to to recognize the Board of Education and all of all of your contributions for the work that happens on a daily basis in each of the schools. When when the schools were discussing what to do this year for board recognition, they reflected back to the to the event that that we did last year. And there was a lot of really positive feedback from the board on what we did last year. And and the buildings decided that they wanted to capitalize that. Last year's event was getting the to spend the day taking a tour throughout the school district, visiting each of the buildings, and having a number of different experiences within each of the schools. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we're not able to have an in-person tour this year. But the schools have planned a virtual tour around the school district. It's it's planned for January 15. We'll be inviting the entire Board of Education. You'll receive a series of Google Meets throughout the day, staggered throughout the day, one from each of the buildings, where you'll be treated to a variety of online experiences with our staff and our students, and and you'll be given sort of a glimpse inside the a virtual day within each of our schools. In addition to that, each of the schools, as we did last year, each of the schools randomly selected a Board of Education member to give you a token of their appreciation. Those, along with the masks that Mrs. Rodriguez had shared, will will be at the Education Center. Smith Clove was, Smith Clove selected Mrs. Donahue. Sapphire selected Mrs. McCleary. The middle school selected Mr. Cirello. Central Valley selected Mrs. Talbert. The high school selected Mr. Beeler. North Main selected Mr. Ezrodi, and Pine Tree selected Mr. Anderson. So you will each be receiving a token appreciation from each of the buildings. Finally, the schools also compiled a video tribute to the board. So I would like to share that with you now, if you give me one moment to present my screen.
My favorite thing about school is reading. Because I learned so many things. Thank you. Merci beaucoup.
Love that.
And who's your favorite class?
Hello, everyone. I'm Mr. Stedt, the New Jersey teacher at Pine Tree. This is Mrs. Shalera's third grade, third grade music class. And we are taking our fabulous rhythms that we learned in the first trimester, and we are incorporating them on the recorder. So friends, I need a new note. What's one of our, what's a new note we can use? Oh, thank you for practicing, Yessi, but please make sure it's on mute. Give us a note that we haven't done yet. G, everyone, show me G. One, two, here we go. Fabulous. Awesome. Awesome.
Thanks to you for coming back to school, and we can still build these awesome rockets.
Thank you for allowing all of us to grab the notebook.
We appreciate being able to participate in our classes this year.
Thank you for all the books and libraries we can use them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Board of Education.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to take a moment to thank our Board of Education for all they do for our schools. They put in so much of their own time, and I just can't thank you enough. Bye.
We'd like to thank you for your continued support of the Monroe Woodbury High School library. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Arts Department thanks you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the Board of Education for all of their time, all of their energy, and all of their consideration getting everyone back to school.
Mr. Earl here from the high school. I just wanted to thank all members of the Board of Education for all your efforts and what you've done this school year thus far.
I just want to say a huge thank you to the Board of Education, because even though during these very trying times, you are still doing everything you can to make this the best year possible. Thank you for always maximizing our learning experiences and really improving our education always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Board of Education. And now I would like to send it to Shannon Chambers, who is our PTA Council President, who would like to spread some love from the various PTAs.
Thank you. Good evening. In honor of the volunteer service of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education and the Board of Education's commitment to providing a safe, caring environment where all students can achieve personal and academic success in every classroom, the PTA Council is gifting eight books to the libraries of Monroe Woodbury High School and Monroe Woodbury Middle School. These books expand on the secondary school's library of titles on diversity, inclusion, and embracing differences. All eight titles contain a book plate listing the donation in honor of the members of the Board of Education. And we thank you for your service, your dedication to the students and families of Monroe Woodbury. I have a helper here. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I mean, I'm sure all the other board members will will speak to this. And I mean, for for me personally, and especially tonight, when we sit in these this virtual world, and I know how hard it is for me to do it as an adult. So I can't imagine what our students go through every single day and our teachers go through every single day. That's the biggest thing. As a board member, I miss being able to go into the schools and see the kids and see what they're doing and what they're learning. And I know for me personally, that's why I'm in this position that I'm in, is because I want the best for our students. And that's the hardest part, is not being able to see them. So at least this virtual world, we were able to to see that. I thank everyone for the gifts. The the gift of the guitar couldn't be any better. I wish him all the best, and I look forward to hoping to see and hear some of his music in the future. So thank you. I don't know if any of the other board members want to say anything. Thank you, guys. Go ahead, Michael.
No, I'm just going to wait till the end.
Sorry, I thought I thought you were going to say something.
I'm going to hold my hands to the end, too.
Okay, all right, very good. So then we'll move on and we'll we'll continue. So the next on the agenda is the discussion regarding the fully remote instruction update.
You're not going to turn it to Eric first?
There's no, there's no name on here, so I was waiting for one of you to just start talking.
I'll start, and then I'll, then I'll, I'll pass it over to to Dr. Hassler. We had a very passionate conversation at our last board meeting. And I I just want us all to remember that the focus was really about what's the best way to instruct students and what's the right balance to to give our students during what is really unprecedented times. And I think that that the conversation, and I use the word passion, because everybody on this team really cares about our kids and really wants what's best. What's tough is that if anything, we've learned in COVID, that not everybody needs the same thing, right? We, there are some kids who need X and others that need Y. And when you're trying to address everything with one action, it is really, really difficult. So I I want to begin by saying that, because it's really important for those who are listening and watching, know that all of this came from a real love and care for our kids. And sometimes, when you're very passionate about something, it gets, the perception is different. So so I want to share that. So I want to go back to the decisions that we've made. And we've always been very, very thoughtful in our approach to how do we deal with the pandemic? And I go back to when we were in August, and the governor gave us an edict that we had to come up with a a plan that had to have several stakeholders that included parents, students, teachers. And so as a good district, that's what we did. We went and we met with many stakeholders. And we came up with, you know, multiple ways of addressing an issue that we had no idea would impact our students. And so we started off slow. And we have been very, very successful. And I and I owe that success to the teachers, administrators, the students. We have really moved along very, very well. And so when November came along, and we were urged by Dr. Gelman to close and have remote school for all students, we went back to the plan and immediately said, you know, this is what we're going to do, because this is what we agreed upon. And that's what we do in this district. We follow protocols and and make decisions based on what we said we were going to do. And so when we implemented it, we started to get feedback. And some of the feedback was, it's not enough time. Other feedback was, it's just the right time. Some students talked about the fact that they were overwhelmed. And so when the conversation, which was an organic conversation for the board, happened a month ago, then we were charged, and when I say we, I say Dr. Hassler and myself and the core team, the task core team, which includes four board members, we were tasked with going back to part of the committee to reevaluate what we're doing. And so we did that. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I also want to share with you that one of the things that we also did is we went back to our students, and we spoke with them and had some very candid conversations. And what came out of those conversations was that we were split 50/50, right, Dr. Hassler? There was, there was no resounding response. So we knew that half of the students wanted to stay with the current schedule, and the other half of the students said that the current schedule was giving them some pause and uncertainty, because they worried seeing their teachers. And so I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Hassler, so he can talk about a little bit. And then, of course, I'm always going to jump in, because I can't not jump in. But then we'll talk about how this, what we did as a part of the process. So, Dr. Hassler, can you talk a little bit about what you did and when you went back to the committee?
Sure. So when when Mrs. Rodriguez says that that the committee was split and we spoke to the students, that the 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 split was really at the secondary level. The the committee that we that we pulled back together, it consists of over 80 people. And it's it's a wide range of individuals across the school district. It includes teachers, it includes related service providers, administrators, parents. On top of that committee, we also met with another committee that we do have of middle school and and high school students. And we, when when we met with these various groups, we kind of presented to them the challenge that was in front of us, which is what should fully remote online learning look like when the school buildings are physically closed? And the solutions that we presented to them were the solutions that we initially discussed at the last Board of Education meeting, which was the the current solution, which is the the fully remote schedule, where it's it's building schedules at the elementary level that the schools have sent out. And at the secondary level, it's periods one through four and five through nine, Tuesday through Friday, and Mondays are an abbreviated one-through-nine schedule. Do we stick with the fully remote schedule that was originally developed? Or one of the other proposals was to take the hybrid schedule that we have in place when students are physically in school, which Tuesday through Thursday is the basically the building schedules, and then Mondays are asynchronous Mondays. Do we implement that same schedule when we're fully remote? And and we share those those solutions with the with the committees, and we ask them to provide feedback about how each of those solutions impacts our kids. Because really, the 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 basis of this decision is what is the ultimate impact on kids? And we were looking at it from two perspectives. We were looking at it from the impact academically on their academic progress, as well as their emotional wellness. And the other thing that we presented to them was, if 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 we we asked them for recommendations, and we said to them, what would you choose? And if you are are sort of between these two choices, are there alternate solutions that you can come up with that you would also recommend to us? And and the feedback that we got respective to the elementary level was, in general, that there's a good balance between the emotional wellness of the kids and the academic progress that the kids are making based upon the schedule that they have. And and the general consensus was that K5, we should continue to implement what we have have had, what we've implemented in the in the shutdown at the K5 level. The discussion, as Mrs. Rodriguez said, at the secondary level was different. We got feedback not only from the the 80 committee members who were giving feedback, as I shared, we've had community members who've reached out. We've had community members who've reached out to us via email to share their feedback. We met with the Student Engagement Committee, which is a group of students at the middle level and at the high school level, to get feedback from them. We did a student survey at the middle school level and at the high school level, and we took feedback from them, and we kind of compiled all this feedback. And we met with the core team to say, here's what we've got. I think that we were hoping, based upon all of this information that we were getting, that there was going to be one solution that was going to rise to the surface, and there wasn't. I think that the reality is that when everybody weighed the pros and cons, I think everybody was kind of split on what the right, you know, what the right direction to go was, related to keeping the fully remote schedule or adopting the hybrid schedule.
Dr. Hassler, can I just jump in?
Absolutely. You're the superintendent, yeah.
So, one of the things that was resounding, when I met with the students, and I asked them, if you were the superintendent, what would you do? Because I like to put young people in positions of making strong, you know, strong decisions. One student said, I just, I would never want to be you, which was, but the rest of the students said, can you come, I would try to look for a compromise. Can you come up with something that would support the needs of all the students? Another thing that came up was the fact that they had a need for consistency. They said, we need consistency. Whatever it's going to be, it needs to be consistent. And so some of them struggled with the schedule that we currently have in remote because it's periods one through four and five through nine. Other students said, I like that schedule because I access my teachers after school. Some of our classified students also shared that they can use that time in the afternoon where you aren't scheduled to meet with their teachers. But resoundingly, what came out of this was that students want to have consistency in their lives. They have so much inconsistency already that whatever decision we made, it needs to be consistent for them. So, one more thing that I want to add is that when we did the survey, one of the things that was, and I'll now use the word alarming, was that 67.8% of our students at the high school shared that they were overwhelmed. That right now, whether they're in hybrid or remote, or whatever schedule we're doing, they are overwhelmed. And they're overwhelmed with the amount of work that they have to do, the pressures that they have, and the other piece is the lack of outlets, right? In our school district, kids have sports, they have intramurals, they're out and about, and right now they don't have that. So that got Dr. Hassler and I thinking about, you know, can we have a compromise that addresses the needs of our students? We know that whatever decision we make is not going to be perfect for everyone, but we want to be able to represent all of our students. And so, we looked at one of the recommendations that we got actually from the task force, and so now I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hassler, so you can speak a little bit about what that compromise looks like.
So, I think one of the, one of the resounding things that did come out of it was that if we were gonna, if we were going to make a modification in the current schedule, that the goal would be to have a nine-period day. Basically, you know, when Mrs. Rodriguez was saying that, you know, the kids were reporting, sometimes it's challenging not seeing their teachers consistently every single day, that the goal should be to find a way to be able to have a nine-period schedule. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a full day of school. So one of the things that we're looking at is, is building on the Monday schedule right now is an abbreviated schedule. The challenge is that the duration of instructional time on Mondays is only 26 minutes. So we said, how do we find a way to be able to increase that to a time where we feel that the teachers can still accomplish and have enough instructional time to be able to support the kids? Because 26 minutes for an instructional block is, it's really difficult to build momentum in that way. So right now, we are working on a nine-period schedule, Tuesday through Friday. That nine-period schedule, we're shooting for 34, 35 minutes per period. We're looking to accomplish that in a number of different ways, extending the school day a little bit, and also shaving some of the minutes. Right now, on that Monday schedule, there's eight minutes between periods. We're looking to trim down some of the, some of those minutes between periods. So our target is 34, 35-minute periods. We haven't finalized the schedule yet because it ends up being pretty intricate because the middle school and the high school need to be on a staggered schedule because there's shared staff between the buildings. So we're looking into what the potential start times would be. How do we stagger it to be able to allow for the shared staff between the buildings? The middle school schedule ends up being slightly different because the middle school also has an advisory period, where we're trying to find, how do we incorporate the advisory period? One of the things that the students and the staff said, that normally advisory is 17 minutes long. However, advisory in the remote world is not quite the same as the way that it is in school, so we may take a few minutes for the middle school away from that advisory period. So, that's basically the schedule that we're shooting for. One of the things that was also very consistent across feedback from students and the staff in particular was Mondays, that if we're gonna go to a nine-period day, the one-through-four, five-through-nine schedule has a check-in time at the end of the day, and we would lose that check-in time if we went to a nine-period day. So having Mondays be asynchronous the way that they have been to keep the same live check-in schedule that we have on Mondays, for kids to be able to do that. Mondays also was widely reported by the kids as being a catch-up day and kind of a breath of fresh air for them to be able to start the week and have momentum rather than starting in with the thick of it.
I think, Dr. Hassler, the other thing that we did was, I mean, we looked at this issue from multiple perspectives. So one of the things that we did was, we said, well, how much time are we really talking about, right? Because I think it's important when you talk about instructional minutes. So we sat down and we took a look at what's currently in a remote schedule. In a remote schedule, students get 110 minutes per period, per week, in the remote schedule. When they're in, when they're in the hybrid, they get 168 minutes. So that's a, that's a big discrepancy between a remote and hybrid. And so we felt like if we did, we took a look at what, how many minutes it would be. In this, we call it Option C, we, there's 140 minutes. So the difference between the hybrid and the revised schedule, we say, is about 28 minutes a week. So, we thought that this would be a fair compromise, again, because it gave students the option, or the ability, I should say, on Mondays to have that, those meeting times with their teachers, to go over things, get themselves ready for the week. And then we would have students be in class, periods one through nine, four days a week, like they traditionally have on this hybrid model, and they would have that contact time. Because what students are saying is that what's happening is, they're getting an extraordinary amount of work when they're on that shortened schedule, or when they're on the long schedule. And so part of the work that the district has to do, and I say district, I say myself, Dr. Hassler, our administrative team, is to make sure that we're giving adequate work to our students and not an abundance of work. Because then we're asking students to be on, you know, on a screen time for, you know, our typical day, and then another four to five hours on a screen doing work. So we have to, I think part of our concern is that we have to strike a balance. Because we started with three priorities and they haven't changed, right? The first priority is the safety and security of our students, the second is the social and emotional wellness of our students, and last is a robust, robust, robust instruction. So none of that has changed for us, is how do we do it well? And I'm not saying that the remote schedule was not good, but I think that this is a better option because it allows students to have the face time with their teachers that they so desperately need, and yet have the opportunity to have, you know, maintain a similar schedule to what they already have when they're in hybrid. Any questions?
I think I just, I just want to speak to the fact that, you know, I'm one of the board members that has been on the task force since, I believe, in July, when we started to discuss going back. And I said today to the larger group of individuals, which I think at one point had upwards of over 100, 100 people on it, and that includes students, staff, parents, board members, administrators, it's a large group of stakeholders that are, that are be able to attend all those meetings all summer long. And it came up on the meeting on the 24th, that we would kind of go back and reassess. And I have to say that I'm thankful that we did that, and especially thankful that we were able to reach out to the students to get their feedback. Because I think if anything that we've learned from this process, and I know it's been said a little bit here tonight, there's no playbook for this. There's nothing that said, when you have a global pandemic and you have to do this in your schools, this is what you should follow. And I think I'm appreciative of the fact that the school district and the faculty, the staff, and the parents, and the students especially, have been so willing to adjust. I think it's important that we hear their message, that hopefully we don't have to continue to change schedules, but I don't want to promise that because, again, we don't know what the rest of the winter and/or the spring will bring. But I think the biggest thing, and I know we did discuss this in our task force, the biggest concern that we came up with was, based off of the survey that was given to the students, a lot of them are overwhelmed. And I don't have the answer as to how to fix that, but I'm happy to be part of the team that will hopefully kind of iron those details out so that moving forward, we can have less of our students feeling overwhelmed.
And I have two other follow-up points, very quickly. We plan to have the schedule finalized within the next few days, so this will be communicated to everybody before winter break. This, it is only intended to be used for the full closure of the physical buildings of the district K-12. So somebody during the, somebody during the task force meeting today asked, you know, in the event that we're able to return to hybrid, we're scheduled to go back to hybrid January 19th, if we were to turn back to hybrid and say the middle school ends up having to close down because of a quarantining situation or something like that, and it just ends up being the middle school, our practice would remain the same, the way that it did before the Thanksgiving break closure, that the buildings would keep their building schedule in the event that they needed to shut down. So the schedule that we're talking about right now would be for the two weeks following winter break, and then we would return to the hybrid schedule January 19th. And in the event that individual buildings had to close, they would maintain that building level schedule. Sorry about that.
Thank you. No, thank you. Any other questions from anyone?
I just wanted to thank everyone for the work and the committee for revisiting. I think it's important, because what we, I know I can speak for myself, what, the consistency word was really the big key. You know, kids missing classes, they don't know what their schedule is today. And I think it's important that that came out, and I really appreciate the work that went in and the efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to number 12 on the agenda, socially-emotional update regarding Dr. Pickens and the Eye Opening Enterprises. This one specifically says discussion led by Dr. Hassler.
100% correct.
Okay, so the last time that I provided an update to the board and to the public was at our November 18th Board of Education meeting, and a variety of things have happened since then. Since then, at each of the building levels, I shared that the schools have had, they've created their equity implementation teams, they continue to meet with their building level team, as well as with the Eye Opening Enterprise team, and continue to develop their work. I also shared at that meeting that we had developed the district-wide team, but we didn't have an opportunity to meet yet. The district-wide team did have an opportunity to meet on December 7th. That team consists on representatives from each of the building levels, as well as members of district administration, some additional students and parents. The purpose of that team was just to kind of have the building share some of the work that they're doing and identify areas where we, across the entire school district, can assist the work that's happening at the buildings. And is there any, are there any district-wide initiatives that we need to embrace and support and get off the ground for consistency across the school district? So that district-wide team met on December 7th. On December 8th, Dr. Pickens himself gave a presentation to our high school students on Finding Your Power During Uncertain Times. Also, in the evening on December 8th, he gave a presentation for parents and caregivers on how to be a resilient parent, guardian, or caregiver during challenging times. I am waiting for Dr. Pickens to create a video on how to be a resilient assistant superintendent during challenging times. But I don't think, I don't think he has created that just yet. Those two videos, Finding Your Power for Students During Uncertain Times and the parent video about being resilient during challenging times, both of those videos are posted on the district website. So if you have not had an opportunity to see them, they are very, very worth your while, especially given the, you know, the time of the year and the challenges that we're facing right now. Finally, we are still planning to proceed with the Trauma-Informed Culturally Responsive Training that we've been partnering with Eye Opening Enterprises on. The staff completed Module 1 at the beginning of the school year, and we are going to be kicking off Module 2, which is the next phase of the training, starting in February after the winter break.
Okay, thank you. I know, I know there's a lot, a lot of great stuff going on with that. I've been fortunate to kind of be, you know, in the background for most of it, just kind of observing and watching. And I will, I agree with Dr. Hassler that if you haven't had an opportunity to see the presentations that were given, to, please go to the website and view those when you have an opportunity, because there were messages in there that I think everybody can take away from. So I really did think that they were great. I want to, you know, thank Dawn and Christine Ricker for finding Dr. Pickens and bringing him to the district, because, again, I've said this in the past, but I think it's a great collaboration that we have for the next couple of years. I appreciate all the work that's kind of gone on behind the scenes because it is extra work, but it's important. And, and I really do feel, I mean, I know the feedback that we got as board members from the students and from families that actually participated and watched was positive, correct? I mean, most of the feedback we got.
It was, yeah. And one of the things that we plan on doing, because we want to get feedback from our students, is do a survey. We just did one, so we'll probably do one in a couple of weeks, just to get more feedback from our students and see what their thoughts on. But, but in general, the feedback we got immediately after the presentation from the students was very, very positive.
Okay. Okay, great. And any other board members have any questions or anything? Okay. Okay, so moving on, we have a resolution for the approval regarding the rescinding of furlough of one-on-one monitors for, excuse me, December 14th, 2020, and 12/21/2020. May I have a motion?
I motion.
A second?
Second.
Oh, it's muted, sorry.
I.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next is an approval of the District-Wide School Safety Plan for 2020-2021. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good, Donna? Okay. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, from November 24th, 2020, and the meeting on November 18th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Committee reports, reports by education committee members. I'll start with Dawn for visitation.
Visitation, we recently, well, we reconvened with a few of the schools. We went to go see Pine Tree recently, and then I will defer to Patrick on the rest of the visitation update because he's going to incorporate that into a bigger discussion.
I mean, same thing. I'll give it to Don for facilities, but I think we have, like, we had some crossover meetings, but Don, anything specific to facilities?
I think Patrick is gonna cover that in his general one, but as far as also with audit, I'm sure everyone saw the announcement that Moody's raised our credit rating when they looked at us. So, that is extremely good news. It's a huge vote of confidence in the district's ability to manage taxpayers' money. It also lowers our cost for our funding that is planned to that is planned to fund the projects that must be done going forward. And I think overall, Patrick and his team have done a fantastic job of laying out the necessary facilities upgrades that have to happen. There's always facilities upgrades that have to happen. But I think they've done an excellent job of laying them out so that it doesn't increase the tax base as far as how much we're spending. We're replacing existing projects with new so that it's keeping our costs steady. But Patrick, if you'd like to add anything to that.
Yeah, sure. So at our last, I'll call it the facilities slash visitation committee meeting on December 3rd, we reviewed our current list of capital projects. And that list was developed through our building condition survey and our long-range facilities survey. And the building condition survey, as you know, is something we do every five years. Every school district in the state does this. And we go around and assess the condition of our buildings and, you know, existing systems. And our long-range facilities plan was sort of an extension of that. We looked at with our architect land associates, like how are we using our buildings? What are our long-term needs, all those sorts of things? So from that work, which is, like I said, four or five years old at this point, we developed a list of projects that we need to do or we could do. And I would, I classify these projects as some were need to have and some were nice to have. And some of the work that we did at that at that meeting on December 3rd was reviewing that and making some determinations about what the priorities of the projects were. So I think one of the takeaways when we reviewed the list was there's a lot of deferred capital investment. I'll call it investment, not necessarily maintenance, that the district has done in these past years. We haven't had a real major capital project other than the field and HVAC improvements at the high school in probably more than 10 or 12 years at this point. And there are a lot of building systems that are basically past their useful life. And we're not talking about exciting things here. We're talking about many of the things on the list that we reviewed are real nuts and bolts types of projects. Replacement of existing HVAC systems. So and I'm not talking about new air conditioning at school buildings. I'm talking about adding or replacing rather boilers, replacing unit ventilators, air handlers, replacement of the building alarm systems, roof replacements, paving of parking lots. A lot of parking lots in the district that can be a capital project because. You know, limited window and door replacements. For instance, at Pine Tree, we were talking about a larger window replacement project at that school because it has residential windows. And they're really not sufficient, they're more than 30 years old at this point. If we were to replace those with commercial-grade windows, we'd have new windows, they're more energy efficient, the building would be more comfortable. There's a whole, you know, range of reasons to do that. Repointing of the exteriors of the buildings was something we discussed. Almost every building is going to need that. And that's essentially repairing the brickwork and the border in buildings to make sure the building envelope is watertight, and that's something you periodically need to do. ADA compliance work, there was pretty much ADA compliance work at every building, such as widening doors, some replacement of door hardware, you know, different door handles and things and some certain buildings elevator additions. So these are things that were sort of consistent almost in every school building. The final piece, which didn't involve the school, was improvements at the bus garage. So there's some big things there that we need to probably do in the long haul. Removal of the underground storage, fuel storage tanks with above-ground tanks, and then improvements to the bus barn, the bus garage, that sort of thing. So for the most part, we're talking about basic infrastructure items, things that you may not notice, but they're really vital to the health and safety of staff and students and the structural integrity and operational real integrity of the building. So these are things you have to do. You think about your own home, there are certain things, a boiler, a hot water heater, a roof, they need to be replaced. And if you don't replace them after a certain amount of time, the useful life of the item, you're basically either spending a lot of money on repairs, or you're just waiting for failure. And I think that's where we are in a lot of these things. In every building, almost, there's these kinds of things that need to be done. So in addition to reviewing that list, and we reviewed the list and we eliminated certain things, we prioritized certain things. I'll give you an example of something that we considered, it's a nice to have, and this has kicked around for years. We considered a new pool at the high school, an auditorium, which is just a fancy name for an indoor pool. But when you consider that, that improvement would be $10 to $12 million. You know, I think collectively, the committees, you know, the visitation facilities sort of realized that's not the highest priority right now. And that shouldn't be something necessarily we focus on. So it was that kind of analysis and that kind of evaluation that we went through. The other thing we talked about was financial component, right? So the cost of the projects, what can we as a district afford? And I mentioned the prioritization of the project. So the one, the good news for our district right now is that we're in a position where in the next five to eight years, we will be retiring several bonds. And retiring just means paying these off. So it's like your mortgage, eventually you pay this off. And so what that does for us, it puts us in a position where a lot of this necessary capital improvement work can be started, and it would be funded by issuing serial bonds, which is generally what we do. It's just a method of borrowing. It can be started, and when we start to issue those bonds and repay those bonds, the existing debt would be retired. So it would have no impact or a limited impact to our budget and virtually no impact to the taxpayer. So it's sort of, we have a great opportunity here, a unique opportunity to both take care of a lot of the capital needs of the district, stuff we've been deferring for years or decades even, and do it with almost no impact to the budget. So for a second, I'd just like to talk about the process really at a really high level. So the process is we identify current and future capital project needs with stakeholder input, which is basically kind of where we're at right now. We would work with our architect on pre-referendum planning and cost estimates. And I say pre-referendum, a referendum is required to do capital projects almost always for public school districts like us. So we would plan for and approve, the board would approve a voter referendum to authorize the projects and the borrowing that would be needed. We would decide if we were going to do that referendum in conjunction with the school budget vote. So we do that, we do that in May, or we could do it as a separate date. So that we, you know, a decision that we make when the board authorizes that. We would hold that referendum. And if, you know, presuming it's approved by the community members, our architects and engineers would start to prepare detailed plans and specifications. We'd submit these to SED, which can take six to eight months, maybe even longer. We do bids, we go out to, it's public bidding, we'd have to go out and solicit bids from contractors. We'd award the contracts, and finally, we would commence the work. So that process, you know, where we are now could take two, two and a half, three years. So it's one of those things that we have to start thinking about doing right now. So that we're positioned when we start to, you know, retire some of this debt, we're positioned that the projects are starting, fruition new debt as the old debt is being paid off. So the long lead time of these capital. Really made it so that we need to start thinking about it and dealing with this again. I think to some degree, during the pandemic, this was sort of backburnered for obvious reasons. But we need to get back on it, we need to start thinking about it and planning for it.
And Patrick, I think that the overall was that the list of projects was significant. But we stripped it down based on a lot of discussion to the only the things that we could afford to do with the debt that we were retiring to keep it within that, that, the financial wherewithal of the district.
That's true, Dawn. We literally had multiple versions, we had three different versions of the capital work that's needed. And so that's part of the process. We agreed these things are necessary, and this is what we can afford going forward. So like I said, there's a lot of work to do on this front, more to follow on this front for sure. I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about that or the project, the timelines involved. There's still a lot to work out with all that. But it's, I think it's coming together nicely, and I think we have a real, a real good opportunity here to get a lot of work that we need done with a limited impact or no impact on our budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, I'm just going to give a quick recap for policy. We have yet to meet, but I do know that I think we have a meeting scheduled for the second week of January. Hopefully, I know that it may end up being a virtual meeting as will still be part of our winter pause. So we'll, once we have that, we'll officially post that next meeting that we have for policy meeting. Moving on, second reading for the policy manual update. We have a second reading for policy number 5220, which was District Investments, and policy number 5410, which was for purchasing. May, is there any discussion about this? This is the second reading, so I'm not sure if anybody has any questions. We kind of discussed this at the last meeting. Okay, so can I have a motion, please, to approve?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay, and we have a report this evening by our student board representative, Emily. Hi, Emily, how are you?
Hi. So before I start, I want to preface my report by touching on the two main issues I brought up in the last Board of Education meeting last month. Like Mrs. Rodriguez said earlier, I recently had a meeting with her discussing plans moving forward regarding the Code of Conduct's language on the Just Code and strip searches. Regarding strip searches, Mrs. Rodriguez made it clear that certain details in the Code of Conduct are required to be written in by rules and laws higher than the school. So while those cannot be changed, revisions to the strip searches language are sure to be corrected where needed. I'm happy to report that Mrs. Rodriguez and I reached common ground about many of the topics discussed, and that in the future, I will be actively involved with setting up meetings and working with groups of already active students to discuss these changes. I would like to continue by sharing updates on my project, Essential Prep. If you didn't know, Essential Prep is a student-led SAT tutoring program that I've been running. We just ended our first program about two weeks ago. And I'll be sharing feedback in the form of our students from the end-of-the-year survey we created and distributed. So we placed them on a scale from one to five and one to 10, with one being the lowest or least adequate amount. Students reported their knowledge of the SAT being in the one to three range before a course. Afterwards, all results were exclusively in the four to five range on the one to five scale. On a scale of one to 10, we averaged an 8.5 for how much the students enjoyed the course. According to our students, our highest areas of improvement were in approaching certain questions on the test and math skills. When asked if they would take a similar class provided by us again, about 80% of respondents said they would like to, with the other 20% consisting of maybe or not sure. My fellow tutors and I decided that based on vocal and recorded feedback from our students, we would be creating another program for the spring SAT date, such as the March one. Alongside that, a couple of students were curious about an ACT program. I have plans to expand our tutoring service to other areas, such as the ACT or SAT subject testing or tutoring in general. We're still discussing that. But in total, our winter program had six tutors, which was more than enough. However, if I plan to broaden our goals in the future, I wouldn't mind a few like extra hands from like students. So if anyone is interested in helping out, or if any parent or student has any general suggestions or comments, please contact me either privately or the Essential Prep email. It's monroe, it's M W, essentialprep@gmail.com. Or I'm pretty sure now if you type in Essential Prep on Google, our website should come up under Google Sites. I want to end my report by sharing some feedback an anonymous student gave on the survey. What you guys are doing is really great, and I, as well as the other students, I'm sure, appreciate how you guys have helped us. My friends and I had an amazing time working on this program, and I can't wait to continue in the future. I truly loved working with every student in this program. So I hope everyone has a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Matt with Personnel.
Thank you very much. Yep, good evening, everyone. There are not a ton of items listed under Personnel, so I would respectfully request approval for those items.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, Patrick for Business and Financial?
Yeah, thanks, Stacy. I would also respectfully request approval of the items listed under the Business and Financial section of the agenda.
I motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education. A motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements by the committee on Special Ed?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good, okay. Reports by the board and central office. Who wants to go first? I'll give it back to Mr. Pravitz.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of our student award recipients from tonight. Big shout out to Mary Grace and to Christie Lorenzo, great job. Thank you to all of our board members and for all of your service. And Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. Enjoy the next, you know, couple of days of remote learning and then a couple of days of no remote learning. So enjoy it, everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Vias?
Hey, good evening, everybody. Dr. Kaufman, welcome on the board, looking forward to work with you. It's a really good team, and it's going to be very good, you will make it even better. I attended the annual Faculty Concert. Mr. Jaborski and our internal musicians did a fantastic job. It was really enjoyable, and they posted a video on our YouTube channel as well. Congratulations to all the students with their remarkable achievement with the PSAT, SAT. That's amazing. Congratulations to all of you. And on that note, Happy and Healthy New Year and Holidays.
Thank you. Dr. Hassler?
You're muted.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
I thought maybe Elsie muted you on purpose.
Oh, I see.
Do that, he has a way.
I just want to say, Patrick had a lot of comments tonight. I just want to say that, for some reason, I have a reputation of being long-winded. Patrick had a lot of comments tonight.
That's true.
Your critique?
Continuing with the theme that we started earlier about highlighting student achievement. In the spring, the National Junior Honor Society was hopeful that they were going to have an in-person induction ceremony, but unfortunately, they weren't able to have it. But tomorrow night, there's going to be a virtual induction ceremony for 120 students that they'll be inducted into the National Junior Honor Society for the 2021 school year. The group represents students earning high honors throughout their middle school career that have demonstrated an interest in community service, and they've actively participated in school events. So, you know, again, despite the pandemic, we're trying our best to keep as many things moving forward as we can. Speaking of that, we had a virtual faculty recital on November 28th. The video is also posted on the district website. If you didn't have an opportunity to see it, please, please, please check it out. The proceeds from that event support the SUSA scholarship, excuse me, as well as Music Boosters. So please check it out on the district website. Finally, one congratulations, obviously. Congratulations to Mary Grace and congratulations to Christie Lorenzo. Congratulations to our appointees tonight, including, we appointed our musical directors for the school musicals, which are also going to be virtual. More information is going to be coming out about that. But again, you know, we're making every attempt that we possibly can to keep as many programs as we can engaging our kids. Enjoy your snow day tomorrow. I, you know, that's super exciting, and I wish everybody a happy, healthy, and restful winter break and holiday season. Take care.
Thank you. Ms. Vitucci?
First, I'd like to read a comment from Emily, our student representative. She said that she just wanted to say thank you to the board for prioritizing students and their well-being during these hard times. I specifically want to thank all the board members involved in the Student Engagement Task Force for really considering student voice with the survey they put out this week. Thank you. So that was from Emily. I just wanted to say welcome and congratulations to Dr. Kaufman. I wanted to say congratulations to all the award recipients tonight, the students, and of course, Chris and Mary Grace. I wanted to say happy birthday to those who have upcoming birthdays. I wanted to say happy birthday to those who have upcoming birthdays, Dan, Michael, and Dawn. I wanted to say thank you to the board for all your hard work and dedication to the whole entire MW family. And I also wanted to say thank you to the custodians and the maintenance teams who day in and day out make our building safe, and they'll be out there working tomorrow also to get it ready for all of us. And happy holidays to all and stay safe in the storm. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yes, oh, I just echo what everyone else has said. Congratulations to, to those that won the award. I'd like to welcome Dr. Kaufman and basically just wish everyone happy holidays and stay, stay safe with the storm. Thanks.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just unmuted. Yeah, I wanted to congratulate all the award recipients and also welcome all the National Honor Society members that are being inducted tomorrow. I'd also like to express my deep appreciation for all the appreciation we got tonight. You know, it's one of the highlights of being a board member, and unfortunately, we're not in person to share that with, with the students because that is actually one of my favorite times of the year. I'd also like to thank everyone on the task force for all the hard work they did as a programmer. I know how difficult these decisions are. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. As you know, we're in the middle of the seventh day of Hanukkah, so happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Kwanzaa, and happy and healthy New Year to everyone. And please stay safe in the snowstorm, but enjoy the snow, kids. Really, have a, go out there, build a snowman, have a good time, okay, and have a good day.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I wanted to echo a lot of what was said as well. But I wanna thank the, the schools and the students for the recognition video. It was great. It was my first time seeing it, and it really warmed my heart, and I know the level of effort that it takes to put that together. I also want to congratulate all the award recipients and welcome Dr. K onto the school board. It's, it's gonna be a fun, challenging time. And lastly, I want to wish the district employees, volunteers, families, a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, who I think just got back on with us, yes?
Yes, I did. I did. Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I wanna echo what I believe a lot of you said, but unfortunately, I didn't hear because I wasn't connected. But congratulations to Dr. Kaufman and welcome formally. I know you're gonna really enjoy it and you're gonna be a tremendous asset to this group. And nights like this with the recognition make it all worth it. It's just so great to see the kids. Congratulations to all our award winners. We truly do have a remarkable district, and I'm just glad to be part of it. Thank you to the schools for those wonderful videos. They just make me smile every time I see the kids putting forth their best efforts, and it's really our pleasure as a board. And I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Dawn?
I, again, I also want to thank everybody and congratulations to Dr. Kaufman. Welcome to the Board of Education. Congratulations to Chris and Mary Grace, very well deserved, the National Merit Scholars, the AP Scholars. Thank you to the schools. Thank you to the students. You know, obviously, like Anthony says, it's really, you know, smile ear to ear seeing the students and all the love and went into all the videos. I'm looking forward to January fifteenth. Yes, it is right around my birthday, so I'll make it extra special. I especially like the guitar dedication that was really, that was really thoughtful, and I appreciate that. I love my pad. I can't wait to get my pad. I also want to thank all the PTAs for not only the, the, the recognition for the board and what they did to, you know, donating the books to the middle school and the high school and the books on the inclusion and diversity, I thought was great. I also want to thank them for an initiative, well, something that came about, you know, working with Christine Ricker and Denise Guerrero. We were given about twelve families, and between the PTAs and the Board of Education and Central Administration and the Education Center and the Micro Computer Center, one of our Girl Scout troops, I hope I'm not forgetting anybody, that, like, all the PTAs, we were able to adopt all twelve, if not more, of the, the families that, that are in need in our community, so I was very grateful for that opportunity. Stacy and I attended the, the Heroes and Helpers event last night at Central Valley, which typically is at Target. Denise Guerrero, again, our social worker, was able to secure that grant that gave back to thirty-four families additionally in our community. Seeing the smiles and the unbelievable gratefulness last night by those families, just, there was nothing more heartwarming than that. So I also want to thank the committees, the reopening committee, the social and emotional learning, the teaching and learning, everybody that was involved in all the meetings and all the feedback and the core team and my fellow board members and the Central Administration. I'm trying to echo Elsie's, you know, attitude of gratitude, right? So there's a lot to be grateful for, especially in this community. I think we all worked very, 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 you know, with dedication and commitment to try to do the best for our students, which is really what we're all here for. So I want to thank all, all the members that, that contributed to that. I want to thank the community for, for your support. I mean, I know that, you know, like Stacy said earlier, it's definitely an emotional time. I'm, I'm a parent here. I have two children in the district. I live in the district. I'm a taxpayer in the district. I'm a Board of Education member in the district. I'm the PTA president. And I have a lot going on, but I'm, you know, committed as, in all of my roles. And again, we are in the middle of a global pandemic, so thank you for recognizing that, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can, so. And, and just something that Eric said, he was looking for Dr. Pickens to create a manual for, for you, and I think maybe the Board of Education could use one too, because this is something that we've never experienced either. So we definitely could, could use some how to, you know, be a board member in the middle of a global pandemic. But we are doing the best that we can with the unbelievable, you know, support and guidance of our, our Central Administration team and our teachers have really risen to the level that I, I, you know. It's amazing. So our students, our teachers, thank you for everything and have a good night, happy holidays, stay safe, enjoy the snow day. That's it.
Thank you, Dawn. I echo that. Maybe I'll follow in the, in the shoes of our governor and I'll write a book on, on how to be a board member in the middle of a pandemic. Let's see. Go ahead, Dr. Kaufman. I, I didn't want to call on you first, but I wanted you to, to kind of get a feel for what this is about. Obviously, I know that you're brand new tonight, but please feel free to, to, to share with us anything that you might want to share in regards to the district.
I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy Kwanzaa, whatever you're celebrating, celebrate it well. It is a time of change. It is a time of lights and hope. I'm really excited to see that we already started immunizations for the first-line workers, which brings me hope that we are gonna put this pandemic behind us in some near future, which will be great. And I can tell you guys that from what I'm witnessing right now, you've done tremendous work in the past year dealing with this pandemic, which is new and very dark and difficult to deal with. As Elsie said, there is no right answer. And I want to thank you for welcoming me to the board, and I'll do my best to be part of the team. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sergey. Dawn?
Yeah, I wanted to welcome Dr. Kaufman and, and recognize all of the awards the kids received. And I think the, the recognition, I think as Susan said, it's, it's one of the highlights of this, and it, it's topped off by all the recognition that we've received on social media this week. I think that it's very nice to be recognized and the community to support the work that we're doing. And I also would like to thank Patrick and his team. It really is amazing that we've received this, this upgrade in our financial rating. It allows the school to do so much more and it saves so much money that it's, his team has done such an amazing job with this. So that's it for me. Happy holidays.
Stacy, can I, I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing? I know I talked a lot, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank Patrick and Peter and Andre for, for their support in everything that they did for the visitation and the the facilities work and everything that's going into planning for the capital projects, so I do want to give a shout out to both of them for everything that they did.
I agree. Dawn, Dawn runs a tight ship on visitation.
Stacy, I also would like to recognize the achievements. There's nothing more exciting than seeing academic achievements with our students.
Agreed. No, thank you. Dan?
I want to thank the schools for the videos. It's great seeing them. It makes me think back to when my kids were little, a time I barely miss. I want to thank the PTA for the donation of the books. I think that's a fantastic way to honor us. Welcome to Sergey, to the board. You're gonna have fun. I want to thank the task force for reconvening to, to make sure that our, our students are receiving the best education possible under the most difficult circumstances. I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Colleen Dunning, the chairperson of the Special Ed Department at the high school for taking time out of her afternoon to meet with me and to share her thoughts, her concerns and challenges with educating students in this COVID world in Monroe Woodbury. And basically, be safe out there in the storm, stay home if you can, and everybody have a happy holiday.
Thank you, Dan. Elsie, I didn't forget anybody, did I? I thank Elsie. It's, okay.
So I wanted to welcome Dr. Kaufman to an excellent school district. And so we're happy that you're gonna be part of the Board of Education. I want to congratulate our students who achieved such high academic achievements. I'm very proud of them. I want to congratulate, congratulate Mary Grace and Christie Lorenzo for their well-deserved award. And then what's happened is, you know how Dr. Hassler used to always say all the things that I was going to say? Well, this time, Dr. Hassler didn't do that, but it was Ms. Tarbord who's, who mentions all the things I was going to mention. But, so he's happy about that. So I, I want to echo something that Ms. Tarbord said is that this district is rich in giving. And I think that this pandemic has not only been a pandemic, but we've also had an economic crisis in our community where our families are struggling for food, clothing, basic things. And I, and I am just so proud of this community because they continue to give so much. And so there are a couple, we did adopt several families. It was the Education Center, the Board of Education adopted several families. Monroe Gives Community, I don't think you mentioned that, Dawn? You might have. You didn't. They also, all the PTAs and Lakeland Bank of Highland Mills adopted two families as well. I also want to thank Mr. Mistrata and Alisa Biff from Woodbury Commons because they, they, they not only, they gave sixty-nine of our students shoes, bedding, towels, and also promised to meet with them to help them get work for our students. And then the target heroes, we had so many people, Lieutenant Phillips, Officer Kevin Potter, and EMS police officers, Woodbury Fire Department, Woodbury EMS. And then lastly, and, and Ms. Tarbord talked about it, that we had this Heroes volunteer. We had twenty-five Hero volunteers, and they gave about eighty children were provided with holiday gifts. I should share with you that we had one family member who didn't, couldn't come with a car, and so the police took all of their belongings and were able to bring them back, and, and that is really the joy of the season, right? This, this, this is a season about giving and, and being able to give. We are so grateful, so it is an attitude of gratitude. There is some sadness that I should share, and we had a family in our district who lost their son. And so my heart goes out to this family. We have heartfelt condolences on behalf of the entire district. And then we also had a family, the Solis family, who lost everything in a fire this weekend. And I was just so impressed with this community that got together. They have found a home that they can rent. They're getting clothing and furniture because they lost everything that they had. But their family is intact and everybody is safe. But I have to say that it was just wonderful for our community to get together because that's what makes our community so special, is that when times are hard, they get together and they support each other. And so the Solis families wants to thank everyone for everything that they, that you were doing to help support them in a really, really difficult time. And lastly, our Board of Education, you are all amazing people, and I have great respect for you, and I am so proud to be a part of this board alongside with you. And I thank you, and with that, I wish you all happy holidays, be safe. And yes, we have a snow day, but the snow day is because we have massive power outages because we're still thinking about, I hate to be sorry, Dr. Hassler, but I still want to say that when we are in remote and we have power, we want to continue to educate our children because that's important as well. So just wanted to make that point. Again, I want to wish everyone happy holidays, be safe, and enjoy the snow tomorrow.
Thank you. I too want to echo a huge thanks to everyone who put together everything that they did for board appreciation. I echo a lot of what the other board members said, that it is the main reason that we sit in these seats and hold the positions that we do is because we care about all of the students in Monroe Woodbury, and it's the biggest part that I miss that COVID has taken away, is us being able to go and visit them in the classrooms and see what they're doing, and, and the board appreciation last year was phenomenal. I, I, I mean, we literally spent the entire day traveling from building to building and seeing the kids was honestly the best part of it. It was really great. So I look forward to the virtual aspect of that because it'll give us a glimpse as to what our students have been doing on a daily basis, so while it won't be the same in person, I look forward to sharing in that. I want to recognize all of the students who received awards this evening. It is a huge accomplishment, and you shall be very proud of yourselves. I know that we certainly are. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Di Lorenzo, who has no longer on the Board of Education with us, but gave us countless hours of his service. So I want to thank him once again. Mary Grace, we want to congratulate you and thank you for, for your service that you've given to the district, and we definitely appreciate that. We're sorry that your recognition isn't the standard dinner and ceremony that we normally have, but we certainly appreciate all that you both have done. I want to thank all the PTAs and everybody who gave gifts on behalf of the Board of Education. They, they couldn't have been chosen any better. I really do appreciate the books and the guitar. I, I think those were perfect. I will definitely cherish my pad. I look forward to getting that and my mask. But, but it's, it's the little things. Okay, good. And I want to congratulate the NGHS recipients tomorrow night who are being inducted into the Honor Society at the middle school. Again, wonderful accomplishments. I've said this in the past, I encourage people when you have free time to visit our district website because, and I know Prudence Thurston is on this call, Carol Spendley is probably on this call, but there is a team behind the scenes that really keep our website up and running, and there's a lot of great information on there. I know we're making a huge initiative with Elsie's Attitude for Gratitude, and also just recognizing some of these students who have even during a global pandemic been making great accomplishments. So I encourage you to go on there. There's some great information. And I thank everyone who participated in the adoptive family, especially to the, my fellow board members. We all chipped in. We were able to shop, wrap, and deliver those, and same, the, the best thing that you can see are the smiles on their faces, so I appreciate that. And I think that's it. I want to commend the cabinet once again because anything that we've asked of you has been presented, and we know that that takes a lot of time for you guys to go ahead and, and create these presentations. I want to commend Patrick and his entire team in the financial office because, as Dawn said, having our rating improved with Moody's will, will definitely be a benefit to, to our finances in the future, so a great accomplishment. And I know it's a lot of hard work, so it doesn't go unnoticed. And with that, I think that's it. I want to wish everybody a safe holiday. Enjoy the snow tomorrow. I personally miss the hazy, hot and humid days because that's just me. But for those of you that are snow lovers, enjoy it. And we will definitely be back in the new year. I believe our, we have a working session, I believe it's And we will definitely be back in the new year. I believe our, we have a working session. I believe it's January 6th. Will be our next Board working session that we have. And I think that's it. So is there, if there's nothing else, then we have, can I have a motion for the adjournment into executive session to discuss?
Motion.
The probation matter?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned, excuse me.